The second monthly meeting, month of April, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our meeting this morning. It's a public meeting, not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to make a brief comment or pose a question on any item that's on the agenda today. There are copies of the agenda at the table as you come in with a set of the materials that we'll be reviewing. Item number two is approval of minutes from the April 6 regular meeting. Let's entertain any corrections to those minutes.
I'll move the adoption of the minutes.
Mr. Lippback has a second? Without objection. Thank you. Okay. April 7, there was a rededication of the Civil War Veterans Memorial in front of the Havermeier Building with the planting of a white oak tree. This tree had been there for, there had been a tree there for almost 100 years. It fell victim to storm and this replaced it to carry forth the meaning of what was put there. On April 11, there was the UGA JCC Annual Holocaust Remembrance Day at the Greenwich Reform Synagogue, and I was thankful that Selectman Lippback attended this very moving occasion. Did you want to make a comment on it?
Well, you properly characterized it. It was a very moving and meaningful occasion. It was exceedingly well-attended, and it's one of those things that you go to kind of every year and yet it never loses its impactfulness, and it is more than a useful, it is an important reminder. It really is.
Thank you for saying for the. On the 18th, the First Selectmen's Community Development Advisory Committee convened. This was the first meeting of the cycle. This is the committee that goes out and assesses the various requests for the federal community development block grant funds. The committee is being chaired by Alexis Volgueras, who's an RTM member from District 6, as well as Chair of the town's RTM's Human Services, Health and Human Services Committee. I believe they report that there's going to be incrementally additional funds to allocate this year, and as is noted, there's tremendous need by nonprofits to support programming, but bulk of it goes into capital improvement. So I want to just again thank all those who stepped up. It's a very fulfilling experience as they learn a lot about the NGOs that provide needed services. On the 21st, I was pleased to be acknowledged by the Cosco Fire Police Patrol, certainly support what they do in our community, and again, an acknowledgement to them for their volunteer efforts. On the 22nd, I attended the 70th Anniversary Celebration of the UGA JCC's Greenwich Israeli Independence Day at Carmel Academy. This was a very well-attended event with a musical presentation and a broad cross-section of the community, as well as neighboring Stanford residents, supporting the founding of the State of Israel, as well as celebrating the wonderful, strong alliance the United States has had with Israel during these 70 years. So, really enjoyed that. All three Selectmen were in attendance on the 24th. The League of Women Voters held a program related to economic development, and it was a panel discussion. Our very own Katie DeLuca was part of it, as well as a representative from the Connecticut Economic Research Council. For those who weren't unable to attend, I believe it was televised through Channel 79, and I would encourage folks to watch it, but I think we all came away with a firmer knowledge of the type of things that we can do and should be doing to contain, continue vibrancy in our town, and I want to commend them for the program. Very, very beneficial. In fact, I believe we received a feedback of all the comments that the citizens contributed, which I think is the type of organic type of input you want from your community. So, thank you. Thanks to the League and their partners. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak to the Retired Men's Association, something I had not done for several years. A very robust group, emblematic of our volunteers in the community. These gentlemen go out and give themselves. The talk, I focused on really two things, and not to repeat it, but leading to the POCD conversation is that what we can do to really enhance the utilization of two of our assets. One of them is Roger Sherman Baldwin Park, the other being the Havermeier Field and Havermeier Building. These are ideas, these are initiatives that I like to see considered. Clearly, they're not novel, but as a lead-off from our attendance at the forum the other night, we want these ideas out there. There's no patent on good ideas, and the more that we can get out there and formulate consensus that improve the town, the better. We finally realized spring sprung yesterday when I was asked to do this annually, attend the annual daffodil show at Christ Church. The weather hasn't often felt like spring, but I think finally it sprung, and I'm going to put away my snow blower sometime this weekend. But amazing what people do in this town. I never knew the variety of daffodils, and I guess they're deer resistant, which one woman was telling me, so.
Nice to know.
Coming up today, I believe the three of us are going to be attending the Lions Annual John A. Clark Award at the Hyatt. This is an annual event that's put on to recognize a distinguished member of the Police Department or members. It's been in existence, I want to say, for over 50 years, and we never know who the persons are until we get there, so another acknowledgement. Arbor Day proclamation announcement. Greenwich has a Tree City by the Arbor Day Foundation. I believe, Selectman Toner, you are going to attend that? I don't think you have to plant a tree, but if you do, use the opposite knee. If you have to.
They're both bad.
They're both bad. Lot of activities. Audubon, Connecticut's holding their Environmental Leadership Awards Dinner tonight. Ted Gilman, those who don't know, if they don't know Ted, they should. He's been with Audubon for over three decades. He's taught many of us, many young people. Remarkable guy. Is being recognized for his educational efforts with environmental science, as is Holt Thrasher, a resident who has supported the programs philanthropically. The Rotary Club is honoring Kids in Crisis Executive Director Sherry Shapiro, as well as the Greenwich Point Conservancy Leader Chris Franco with its 2018 Citizens of the Year Award tonight. And the Greenwich Citizens Police Academy is holding its biennial reunion tonight at the Tamara Country Club. I'm going to try to, the Citizen of the Year, yes, and the other perhaps. Tomorrow, an event that is extremely important, very meaningful, something that I've been very proud to support since its inception and partner with the YWCA, and it's the annual Stand Against Racism Program. This is a community-wide event. It brings together people from a cross-section of our community, certainly standing against racism and for inclusion in diversity. And I think in this community, which is so diverse, we should always celebrate that. Mary Lee Kiernan has done a wonderful job of revamping the program with music. Weather permitting, it'll be out here on the steps of Town Hall. If in fact, weather does not cooperate, I gather it will be in here. Saturday evening, a woman who's synonymous with the Greenwich Symphony Orchestra, that being Mary Radcliffe, is being honored at their annual event. She has been the president of that organization for decades and has truly been an inspiration in bringing music to not only the adults, but to children through programs held within our schools and the schools that perhaps have populations that would not have access to this type of art. So, thank you to Mary. The Greenwich Historical Society on Sunday is having their annual landmark ceremony. This is to recognize those properties, both residential and commercial, who have not only historical designation, but they've done preservation to keep them in existence. So, I just want to appreciate and thank what they do. And finally, I do want to just acknowledge our Human Resources Department. I received a very nice note from a retiree, and again, I read these because it's often, not often, that we say thank you to our folks. So, this gentleman wrote, "Dear Mr. Tessie, just a note to say what a fantastic team of workers you have in Human Resources and Retirement Employee Benefits. On numerous occasions, we had questions and paperwork for my retirement. They were never too busy to stop and help me out with questions and answers. They are Megan, Brandt, Tanya, Allison, Graham, Atiya Jones. The receptionists in the office were very kind and helpful also." Thank you. So, again, thanks to our staff who endeavors to be very efficient. That concludes the updates. Proceeding to our next item under, oh, business? We've got no old business. Other than I just say that I received, and I think all three of us received, a very nice note from one of the participants of the Hillside Road Working Group, acknowledging the efforts of Ben Brangian in the way he's undertaking that assignment we tasked him with. And I think each of us were pleased to hear that Ben is calming the waters and getting people to focus on solutions. So, yeah, thank you, Ben. It's given us an opportunity not to get more gray hair or less hair. New business, we have a request for a road closure from the Byron Veterans Association. We have a letter dated April 16 that they were making this annual request for purposes of the Memorial Day Parade. They would also like to hold a block party on Veterans Day following the parade. Barbara, is there anything else that we are to be aware of about this? I mean, this is something that's been rather routine. Veterans Way is essentially really with one other property that is on it. It's such a small street.
Right. It's the former New Lebanon Avenue connecting Delavan and West William, or William.
I mean, I have no questions about it. It's rather routine.
Have we done this before?
Yep. Yes.
For years?
We've done a, we've done a closure for the parade because they go down and around the neighborhood and come back.
The only reason I'm asking is I have no problem with it, is I just want to make sure that people know about it, because if anyone does have a problem, we hear about it before it happens rather than after it happens.
Yeah.
It's a fairly well-attended event by the neighborhood, so, and it's a very short street.
Well, that's why I was asking, have we done it before? So that people are broadly stated on notice that, yes, this is something that happens annually.
So, we just need to give approval, and then follow it up with the letter, and PD is there and they handle the closure.
Do I have to close? Adjust the closing of the road?
Okay. So, we moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
That's from noon to 5:00 PM. Should just note that. Okay. The next item on our agenda is presentation or notification by our assessor, Lauren Elliott, about the resumption of the annual, or not annual, you'll tell us it's five years, property revaluation inspections.
Yes. Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning. I'd like to take this opportunity to inform you exactly what the Assessor's Office is doing and the fact that we are going to resume our property inspections for the 2020 revale. As you may be aware, the last time we did a revaluation, it was on October 1, 2015. We are required to do a revaluation every five years, the next one being October 1, 2020. With a 2020 revaluation, we will have the requirement that we inspect each property in town. There's a, the state statute mandates that the Assessor's Office or revaluation companies inspect each property once every 10 years. Because there was no, really not a lot of inspections done between 2010 and 2015, we are now taking this on between 2015 and 2020. The reason why we, in the past, we have allocated this portion of the inspections to a revaluation company, and when we do that, the revaluation contract is quite expensive. I believe the last time you did that and you put it in a revaluation contract, it was for the 2000, 2001 revaluation, and it was upwards of $3 million. What we're doing now is every, every summer, every spring, summer, fall, we're trying to do at least a third of all the properties of single-family homes. So, every summer, I have, we have the requirement of roughly doing 3,300 homes. We started this last year, and we basically hope, we are basically doing this out of our capital budget. We are inspecting homes, A, through our three appraisers in our office, and then we also hire a couple outside measures and listeners to help us with this. That runs us, in addition to just my office budget, only about $100,000 additional cost each year. So, hopefully, what we will do is we will be able to, we're saving the money, the town a number of issues, number one, and saving the town a number of, a fair amount of money. We will put, when we do put the revaluation contract out in 2020, we will put out the contract out just as though we did in 2015 without this requirement to inspect properties. So, I wanted you gentlemen to know that we're starting this because I'm sure you'll get some phone calls. The process is quite easy. The way we do it is we send an appraiser out. We've notified, we'll put, we'll issue press releases, and we basically send somebody out. They knock on the door. If there's any children or anybody underage or anybody who does not have the authority to give someone permission, they simply leave, and we'll try again, and we'll try to make an appointment. It roughly takes about 15 to 20 minutes on your, not every house. We have some houses that will take quite some time. However, the majority of houses shouldn't take more than 15, 20 minutes. So, we did this last year. We had very little concerns. We do have a few comments, but for the most part, it ran very smoothly, I would suggest. I would, yeah.
Is it fair to say that all they are doing is measuring, for lack of a better word, just assessing what the footage is, et cetera? That's it? It's not, it's not a market valuation?
No. We're just actually gathering the data.
Physical facts.
Right. Basically, we have property record cards for every single property here in town. What we're doing are, the way we do mass appraisal is we measure the outside. If possible, we do like to get inside as well, but basically, what we're doing was we're sending them out there with the information that we have in hopes that they just verify the information that we have and make sure that it's correct and it's up to date. So, if anything has changed, anything has been added that we have not, we have not been assessing, we will then, we will add that to our property information. Okay. Any other questions?
I gather if you're picking up improvements, is there any reconciliation with that, with the Building Department, presuming that any improvement had to have a permit to be done?
What we're doing is, and because we don't know exactly when that may have happened, if somebody has an addition on the back of their property that we have not picked up. Last year, what we did in addition to doing our walk-around, we actually took, we have this program, it's called pictometry, and basically, what it does is it takes, it's, we use our flyover, and it takes a picture, and it draws the diagram of the house that's there. We then match it to the picture of our assessment card. We went out last year and we picked up anything that we might have missed over the last few years. I don't know, and it was hard for us to say when we missed it. We do add that information and we do assess them currently. So, if we walk out to a property right now and we find out that there's a one-story addition off the back of the property that we've never been assessing, we will add that to the assessment rolls this year. Okay? That's just, but we're valuing as though from our last revaluation, which was October 1, 2015.
Do you go inside the house?
If somebody is home and they allow us to go in, yes, we would like to get in. It is not mandatory that we get in, but it certainly is helpful, and it actually, you know, to get the overall quality of construction and condition of the home. But last year, we actually made the point of updating all our records, so we should be very accurate as to all the additions. Going forward, we will do this every three years, so if there is an addition that is missing, we can then go to the Building Department and say, hey, did we have a building permit for this or not? But we needed to get our records up to date, and we did that last year.
I'm a little confused by one thing, just a point that Peter made. If you can fly over and take a picture, why does it take all these people going around, walking around three years to get it done? Just fly over, take pictures, and match them up?
Well, the problem is I can't, it's hard to say, okay, from 500, 5,000 feet, is that 20 feet or is that 15 feet? We actually have to measure it. And it, and we also need.
You know there's a structure there, but you're not sure exactly what the dimensions are.
We are not sure of the dimensions. Also, when we go up to a house, there is one thing that we like, we like to look at also the quality construction of a home. We need to know and the condition that it is, and you can usually tell from the outside of the house if it's, you know, if it's a very simple, modest home, or if it's something that's quite extravagant.
But as to the structure, just to come back again, if you fly over and you see there's a structure, then you could go out and measure and see how big it is.
Right.
But you will have gotten all the flyovers, and you will have narrowed it down to only those which have a structure you don't have listed correctly.
Right. But the problem is the state statutes still require us to go out to inspect each house, yeah, once every 10 years. So, I don't think flying over it is going to get me there.
That's not an inspection?
Yeah, that's, I don't think that qualifies as an inspection, I'm afraid.
What will residents, property owners, be presented in terms of knocking on the door in terms of identification so they know that it's a reputable person and not, okay?
Everybody will have a town ID. Everybody also, our, the residential appraisers from my office will be in a town car. We have three town cars out there. So, they'll have a town car. They also have the notice, they also have their property record card. They will also have a business card from the Assessor's Office that if somebody wants to call, in other words, they're concerned about this person, they can give them a business card. That person will leave, and then we can all make an appointment for them at another time.
Great. That's fine, and that gets put out in the press, so that.
Yeah, it gets put out the press, everybody, and as well as through all the Town Hall department heads and the switchboard. Police dispatch is also notified of not only the people out there, but their car registrations and their.
Terrific. That's fine. I just, thank you so much. I don't, do you have any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number, item C on the agenda is revisions to the Alarms Appeal Board to expand membership. With us today is Richard Shapiro, who's from the RTM.
Well, both Appointments and SNAP.
And SNAP.
But I'm coming here today for RTM Appointments. So, for those who don't know me, I'm a 23-year resident of Greenwich, serving on both those committees, and this is the first time I'm coming before the Board of Selectmen, so I'm very excited about that. It's something I can cross off my bucket list. It's been there for a long time. So, the project that I'm coming for you today is to add an alternate member to the Alarm Appeals Board. And just to give you a little background of why we're looking to do this is that currently the Alarm Appeals Board has five regular members, no alternates. They meet infrequently, they only meet quarterly, and a quorum, of course, is three members. Now, we know from SNAP and you know, having approved people, this is one of those agencies where it's often a long lead time to get members, to get new members and fill open spots because of the knowledge and skill level that you have. Without an alternate, you don't have anybody to move into the next level and to develop those knowledge and skill base. Now, basically, what happened was, a couple of years ago, you had a situation where two people of the five were unable to fulfill their responsibilities. One passed away, unfortunately, the other one had health issues, so now you only had three people, so you needed all three to get a quorum. And Rick Brooks, the Chair of the Agency, felt that there was a real deficiency in the potential service to the town residents, because if somebody was waiting to see the Board who meets quarterly, and suddenly they couldn't hold the meeting because they didn't have a quorum, that could be months before they could meet them again. So, Rick decided that he felt it was necessary to add a, an alternate member. So, when we found out about this effort in Appointments, we decided to sponsor this effort and to lead it so that we can get it through the full RTM and get formal approval. So, just to go through what we've done to this point, is that at our January 23, 2018 meetings, the RTM Appointments Committee formally approved the sponsorship of this effort. On February 19, the Alarm Appeals Board called a special meeting, and in that, they formally approved their support of an alternate position. Then on February 21, SNAP did the same. We formally approved the motion, the support of this new position. Rick and I worked with Abby Wadler, who's here today to get the appropriate ordinance revised to include this. Now, I believe in your package, you should have both a redline version and a final draft that Abby put together. She was great to work with and very responsive. Wayne Fox has signed off on this. So, the next step that we wanted to do was to, of course, bring it before the Board of Selectmen to make sure that you understand this project is going on, and were there any issues, concerns, before we brought it to the final stages of getting it through the full RTM process.
I do have one question. Does this Board meet as a Board?
In other words, as a formal meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
In other words, if I had an appeal before the Board, would I show up here or some other place, find five people or three people, whatever the number was, sitting here, waiting to hear what I have to say?
Absolutely. They have scheduled meetings, open to the public, they produce minutes to it, so absolutely they do that. So, they are on a quarterly schedule. They will, and sometimes what happens is if they have nothing on the docket, they may not have a meeting, but if they have other issues, they may call a special meeting. But absolutely, they do meet on a formal basis. Any other questions? So, the next step, what we want to do at this point, if there's no other issues, is that I will bring this back to RTM Appointments, provide them with all of the project steps of what we've done, so our next meeting, so there can be formal approval there, and then we will put it through the process. Our goal is to get this on the June 11 RTM call. So, that would be our goal, to get it approved at that, at that meeting.
Do we have to approve it today to facilitate that?
Yes. That would be the, 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 the day, and then move forward to the RTM.
I'll move the approval.
Without objection. Then thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
D on our agenda is schedule special meetings for purposes of executive session to interview candidates for nomination to Boards and Commissions. So, Barbara, what do you, what can you tell us in terms of?
The, we need to have a meeting before the next regularly scheduled Selectmen's meeting, which is May the 10th, so that you would then, at that meeting, be able to act on nominations, unless, of course, you wanted to do so after the special meeting, executive session.
Okay.
So, you have an option. The deadline to submit for the June RTM call is May the 16th.
Can I raise an issue that's sort of semi-off point, but it's relevant? It's, it's two points. I guess I would like personally to request that we bring SNAP, or at least Peter, combine in here to get a better, for me anyway, a better feel on how this process is working. And let me be more specific. I looked at the list. It's overwhelmingly male, not female. It's not diverse. I mean, to the point you were making, Peter, that we are a very diverse community. I don't see much diversity here, and we have so many people, and I know there's a lot to be said for institutional knowledge, but we have a lot of re-ups, and I'd like to see what we can do to get new people in here. Not that I'm complaining about the old, but I really think it's a time to try to get younger, newer people in the community involved, and I, I don't know, and I don't mean to imply they're not doing it. And I, I don't know, and I don't mean to imply they're not doing it, I just don't know what they are doing. I do know the result, which is, we're not seeing diverse candidates, and we're not seeing as many women as I'd like to see.
One thing to keep in mind is that the SNAP committee, what are there, six or seven people that are on it? Six of those people are women, that are looking out in the community for people to fill, let's say it was the Board of Alarms Appeal. There's one person that's assigned to that, and when there's an opening, or when there's a maturity of somebody's term, they go to them and deal with them, and bring the name back to, back to Peter and the SNAP committee. So that's, that's the way it works right now.
Well, that's good. I just like to hear, but the result isn't, at least in my judgment, isn't working as well as I'd like to see it work, so-
That's fine.
I guess we'd like to, I'd like to talk to them about what else we should be doing. I don't doubt that they're trying-
Absolutely. I get, I get a friend of mine that complains constantly about the quality of the people that are on some very important boards in this town. And I say to her, you know, find me somebody.
Yeah. No, no, I, I don't mean to diminish either the difficulty in doing that, or the effort that's being put into it. What I mean to do is say, we ought to, and maybe you guys are, I have not, obviously, dive more into it and see what we can do.
Yep.
I have no question about the intent of these people, but see what we can do to help them to get better out into the community and find more people. I, it's not easy.
No, I'm sure that either Peter or Caroline would be very willing to come in here and talk about what's-
When is their next meeting? Do you know?
They're only meeting once a month, and the next meeting, I believe, is on the 9th of June, or May.
That's, that's too late. I mean, in terms of, since they're assembled, then, because it's a public meeting, Cindy can go there, but, either way, you know, Caroline Stevens is the Chair, correct?
Right.
Okay, a little setup. Well, can they, can they, I guess the question, can they come to the executive session to talk, or no? Probably not. Because executive session is for us to interview, like, the actual candidates. I don't know if we could speak to them that, we'd have to speak to them at a meeting like this.
I think that's correct.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
I think that's correct. Yeah, I, I don't mean to, you know-
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Unduly stir the pot. I just looked at, I just went down the list and saw, it's so predominantly male.
Right.
And based on the bit I've seen, I've seen no diversity. We, we, and I don't doubt that that, I don't suggest that's a lack, a lack of trying.
Right.
It's just, then, okay.
Let me make this-
What else can we do to try?
Let me make this suggestion, as we think about getting together to go into executive session to interview people before, maybe we could have Peter or Caroline come in and talk to us about, you know, how they come up with this list of people.
Perfect. And, and again, I keep coming back to it. And what else can we do?
Yep.
If anything, to better diversify that effort.
That's fine. I totally agree with you there.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can set that up, that's a good way to structure it. So have a, it's a special meeting. The first part would be to talk with them, we could have that an open, and then, then we have the people we're going to interview.
Executive session.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
You know, anything to attract more people to these slots, that's, that's what this government is all about.
Yeah. No, again, I cannot overemphasize, I'm not being critical in that regard, I just want to dive in and see what the three of us can do to help them-
Yep.
-do a better job.
Yep.
Absolutely. So do we, so do we have anything today?
Schedule.
Right. So we were, I think in our last meeting, we, we had nothing else today, right? We're waiting to do the interviews, because we got to the point where the remaining was witherall, if I recall? It was Board of Ethics, it was-
It was Board of Health, Board of Ethics. And then we needed to clarify, and I have the answer for you, that the Board of Health for Dr. Bronin, his term does expire June of 2018. You would then need to nominate him for an interim term, should you want him to continue. Would be an interim term of one year, till 2019. This is part of the catch-up-
Correct.
...of the reorganization of appointments.
Help me, I gotta go to the minutes. Did we, what did we do last meeting? I can't remember, I gotta look at this.
Last meeting-
I thought we did, some, did we do anything?
Two appointments for parks. There was the appointment-
Human services, we did three.
There were three for human services.
We did, we did two for parks, three for human service. So we said here that we wanted, we wanted to have the witherall board people-
During that, that was a comment that Mr. Hittback made during the nomination process.
Well, we were going to schedule those people, that's my understanding, we were going to schedule those people for this meeting. Okay. Because our goal, right, guys, is to look at that, who's completed in June, so we see them all, so we can get it done.
Correct.
And, yeah, so, okay. So we really have nothing to do on this, today. Good.
But, but do we have to schedule something before?
We have to schedule the meeting, I mean, yeah.
Right, okay.
But when we get to appointments and nominations-
We're not acting on anything right now.
Yeah, unless you guys have something. I, I didn't think we did, but-
No.
So, calendar's open.
You could do Dr. Bronin now, if you wanted, unless you want to schedule him for an interview.
I know Andy Bronin very well, so I have no issue with it, but if John and Sandy want to meet him, I don't know.
I've met him. That's the most I can say. He introduced himself to me recently.
He's quite a renowned dermatologist, I can tell you that. He's very renowned in his field.
I mean, he seemed, he's happy to meet him if John wants, but I don't have to.
Well, if it's only an extension of a year, we can go ahead and do it.
He's up for a year extension? Yeah, I would go ahead and do it.
Is appointment's available? I have some-
He's very good. So, but we have to wait till we get to that point on the agenda, Barb, because we're still at the meeting schedule part. But, yeah, I, I, believe me, I can attest to his professional acumen, and he's, he's relatively new. Sandy, he's one of our newer board members on, on there.
Well, I'm sure he's a good, good choice.
In fact, one of the things he did in working with one of the other people on there was to, when they send out the annual renewal of licenses for those folks who handle, I don't know what they call it, beautician, barber-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They put inserts looking for, you know, melanomas, you know, the skin, they put in that information. It was an idea that he-
That he have a-
The two, the two of them came up with-
As a dermatologist, he probably would.
So, you know, you like to see people using their expertise to help. All right, so-
Okay.
We're almost out of April already.
When, when's the notification period, Barb?
Right, right, but then we have to call the people to come, right, Barb? That's the thing.
That's, the, the issue is that, once we have the date, then we can contact the individuals to see what their availability is. So I think doing, trying to schedule for Monday is nearly impossible.
How about Thursday? We try to schedule for Thursday?
Perhaps in the afternoon. If you could, you could try. We could try for 1:00 on Thursday, the, the 3rd.
Right. I was just thinking that would be a good day, because I don't know if the three of us are going to be here for the National Day of Prayer, but that's from 12 to 1.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be reading a proclamation or something.
Are you?
Yeah. So I'll be here.
I'll be here.
That's a good day.
That's a good day for me.
And we'll be very contrite after that.
Prayerful and soulful and-
Would you like to try for 1:30, just to make sure there isn't overlap?
Yes.
All right, so I'll need a motion to schedule a special meeting for 1:30 PM on Thursday, May the 3rd. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. As we're on schedules, can I confirm that I would like to move the June 14th meeting to June 15th? I told you I would get back to you. Yeah.
Fine with me.
Yeah, fine by me. Okay.
All right, let's have a, a motion to reschedule that meeting as well.
So-
Without objection. Barbara, it looks like this was reserved already for that date. I'm looking at this calendar, and it says-
There was a hold, I put a hold on that, because we hadn't-
I'm looking at this, and I'm trying to see, Tammy's name is on here, this get, you know, the front desk. Okay?
Yeah, we put a hold until we had an actual vote on it.
Great. So moving right along. It's good.
Okay.
Wow, this is a, this is a fast one. Must be hungry. Hungry? I'm gonna make you guys one of my smoothies that I eat, that I make in the morning, and let you try it.
Do it, do it.
It's good for you. It's full of spinach, and there was something I missed on the news today about, is it, I can never pronounce it, cacao? You know, you know, like the raw-
Cacao marries?
Cacao, no, it's chocolate. There's something, I think it's really good for you, but I put, I, but basically, I, I came across this, and I, I'm gonna make it for you guys. I gotta bring my blender in.
Are you feeling hungry?
I am, the spin, I do, I actually do, I actually do.
It's got chocolate in it, it's gotta be okay.
So-
You get a, you get a contact, you come from your office, we'll know you stacked up on the, can you stand?
I don't know if it's helping my eyes, my eyes are getting worse, maybe it's something else I need to take.
It's called HP.
Aye, we're ready.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into executive session for purposes of discussion of penal litigation and settlement of claims. Quite quickly, a small motion, I've already heard, if you can come on in.
10, 4, 2.
Okay, all right, thanks.
This is a resumption of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting, Thursday, April 26th. Motion to come into public session.
Second.
Without objection. The Board reviews, reviewed and considered several items. The first item we will consider action upon is a real estate assessment appeal, and we had one item presented us, and for purposes of discussion, Ms. Heinz, if you could please read that one.
This is docket number HHB, CV 16-6036236S, parcel number 11-1616. There is a proposed tax credit of approximately $8,025 against future tax payments. If the plaintiffs were to have prevailed at trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $30,146 plus interest and costs.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next two items are worker compensation settlement proposals coming to us from Heather Porto of Palmeras, Drake, and Stabnik. Barbara, did you want to read those?
Sure. The first one is claim, the claims number 0061763 and 0115747, with a proposed settlement, full and final settlement of $25,000.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Without objection.
The next is claim numbers 0040548 and 120113282, for a full and final settlement of $250,000.
Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Without objection. And finally, matter we, we briefed on previously, if you could just present that, Barbara?
Sure. This is the case of Edmund Slicinger Jr. versus Daniel Hendry in the town of Greenwich. There is a recommended settlement of this case for $45,000.
So move.
So move? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That concludes the business before the meeting today. We have scheduled a special meeting for-
3, 3, 1:30.
May 3rd at 1:30, Thursday, May 3rd at 1:30.
Yeah. Can we also invite either Mr. Crumbine, or-
Yeah, so we're gonna-
Or Miss Anderson?
We're gonna be having a, we've scheduled a special meeting for May 3rd, beginning at 1:30. The first portion is to hear from the Chair and the liaison to the Board of SNAP, to the Board of Selectmen, on their recruitment efforts. And then secondarily, we will have an executive session to interview candidates for nomination